Welcome, everyone, and good evening. I call to order the April 11th, 2022 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. For folks viewing at home, our blue jeans should be ABA compliant with transcription and translation services, and there should be a link on the welcome screen where you can access both. Would our treasurer for the evening, please call roll?
My pleasure. Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg? President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions that you may have. And so we're going to start this evening with the first item on our agenda, which is the three-month board priorities. If Rob could bring up our slide here. Do we need a motion for a treasurer pro tem tonight? Sounds like we do. Okay, can we have a motion for a treasurer pro tem, please?
No moves.
There are seconds. Any discussion?
Who do we nominate?
Mike, thank you for joining us. Can you remind all of us your last name?
My last name is Augustin.
Mike Augustin, thank you so much. Jen did send that to me in advance, and so that oversight is on me and nobody else. So thank you for being here. Any other discussion before we vote to make Mike our treasurer pro tem this evening?
I would just like to say that I'll vote in favor now that I know it's Mike. I trust Mike.
He wasn't so sure before, but now we're in a good spot.
And not Brandon.
Excellent. Okay, can we please call the vote? Mike, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. So now, with that in place, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is on our three-month board priorities, which you can see up on the screen. So as a way to get started here, I wanted to remind everybody what these are and where they came from and why they matter. These are the handful of things that we decided matter most over the course of the next three months, between 3/7 and 6/13. I'm noticing that they say 1, 2, 4, 5, which is a great look for a school district. And I apologize because I'm sure that's my fault because I made this slide. So now that that's fixed, we're all about continual improvement, so we've got that correct. And these came from a discussion we had at the meeting on March 7th to discuss and ratify as a board what's the small number of most important things for us to move forward over the next three months. Part of what I think shared accountability for that means is that we come back to each other and to the public, maybe not every meeting, but meaningfully often between the 7th of March and June 13th, to share an update on how we're doing, on the things we said mattered most. So we're going to do that tonight for just a couple of minutes. And the way I'd like to proceed is what I shared with everybody earlier, which is to, for each one, either I or another board member who's been proximate to that work can share a few updates with each other and the public, give everybody a chance to share any other feedback or ask any other questions. And then we'll just go down the row, starting with Mr. Murawski to Mr. Craig all the way down. And I'm going to ask everybody to share a color for how you see our progress at this point. And we're going to use a scale created by Mr. Craig. So what Mr. Craig suggested was that you're going to give it a green if the item is either complete or substantially completed. You get to decide what that means. That's green. You're going to give it a yellow if something is started or slightly off track. You're going to give it a red if it is off track or not started yet. Okay? And so again, we'll invite either myself or another board member to share some updates on what's happened, not long, but quick. Give everybody a chance to ask some questions. Give everybody a chance to share their color. And then I'm going to ask Rob, we're going to assign like the equivalent of like an average rating from everybody so that the public can see where we are, so we can see where we are, and so that we see movement between now and next time. Any questions? Okay, so on the first one, which is ensuring that the new superintendent has a strong start, we said that concretely, we want to help her establish strong working relationships inside and outside the organization, and that we're on schedule to have measurable goals informed by her assessment of the district by July 1st. So I know she shared some information with us about her plans around meetings she had, meetings she will have, a lot more that needs to happen, but I do think this is very started and from my perspective where it needs to be. Anybody want to share any other questions or just commentary on number one? Okay, all right. So Mike, would you give it a color for us?
I would say, as it's written, I would say green because we are on schedule. I mean, we don't have the measurable goals, but the way it's written, I would say we're well on track.
Okay, so green, according to Brandon, is completed or substantially completed?
Yellow.
So let's move make it yellow because it is started, so we'll go with yellow. Mr. Craig?
Yeah, it would be yellow also. I think we are on track, and I just don't know if we've made it substantially to our main assessment measurements.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think we're on yellow, and I would worry if we said we were green or red or whatever. So I think yellow, I think we're on track. I think we're progressing well. I would suggest that it's possible that maybe the chairs of the board committees might want to have an opportunity to write down and update where those committees are working in greatest depth, just to make sure she's caught up with where the board is via committee.
Sounds good. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yellow with no comment.
Dr. Moffett?
Yellow. I think everyone's pretty much said where we are.
All right, good deal. Thank you. So we'll make that one yellow, Rob. Moving on to supporting the passage of a strong FY '23 budget, we said that was going to mean a positive five-year forecast informed by an analysis of what's been working for students and involve meaningful stakeholder feedback. Maybe somebody from the Finance Committee want to start off on how that's going?
I would just start with, I think that's yellow. We're deep into it, and I know that the current administration's been working hard with the incoming superintendent to compare data and also understanding that this next budget is going to be a budget of the new superintendent, but highly informed by the work that's been done by the current administration. And I would point out that the treasurer has been working very closely with the incoming superintendent, as well as, I would point out, the couple of dates that we have in, I believe, May that are for community engagement and encourage folks to attend those to help get the community more involved with the budget preparation.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. So we started with Mr. Murawski this time. We'll do that again, but next time we'll start down at the other end, just for some variety sake. Yellow. Thank you. Greg?
Yellow.
Ms. Jones?
Yellow.
Dr. Moffett, yellow? All right, wonderful. Moving on down, so we've got our third one, which is support the adoption of a strong transportation plan for school year '22, '23. Would anyone like to? We're going to have an update on that tonight. I don't know that I have a ton of new information since last time, other than that I know everyone's working on it, and I'm looking forward to learning and hearing more. Certainly know that it's started and that we have some more work to do. Anybody have any questions or other feedback they'd like to share on this one? Yeah, Ms. Bolton?
I would say that we're sort of on schedule, although certain things are needing to be done for our compatriots in the charters and non-CPS schools, where they're on a different timeline than our CPS folks are. But it looks like we've been making progress, and I know that they are in the process conducting the optimization efforts, which show some promises. But most importantly, we, according to general counsel, are going to need to negotiate a new contract with SORDA, a full contract that has not been done since 2017, I think. So that's in the works, and will require board involvement. And again, appreciate the work of the administration to get us a lot farther in this transportation planning than we've seen in the last couple of administrations.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. So starting with Dr. Moffett this time?
I think we're at a yellow for that.
Ms. Jones?
Yellow.
Ms. Bolton?
Yellow.
Mr. Craig?
Yellow.
Mr. Murawski?
Yellow.
All right, great.
Maybe a bright yellow.
Bright yellow. A very strong yellow.
A strong yellow.
It looks good. So number four, last one, which is begin a governance coaching series, so that we will have selected a program, started it, done a first self-assessment. And there are some topics listed there that the program would cover. Would anyone like to share an update on this with the public?
So yeah, I'll share. We did, at the last board meeting, we presented the recommendation there, and we began the process of reaching out to begin that contract talks, at least to get the idea of what the full contract would look like based on the bid. I think there's still some measurables that we have to figure out with regards to how we will do the first session, which is a kind of a retreat-style session they wanted to do. But we are working hard to get those information together, and we do already have a kind of a dollar amount that they've already bid out in the original bid that we can work off of, so.
While we're with you, will you suggest a color for us?
I would suggest yellow at this point.
Great. Anybody find a color other than yellow for this one? Ms. Bolton?
I think we're green, but because I think a majority of the board expressed an interest in acting on the recommendation from the committee that was checking things out. But I would suggest that, as I shared with President Lindy, I do think that parts of the RFP that specifically could relate to strategic planning should be handled by Alma. And indeed, the RFP does make it possible to have multiple vendors with specific issues. But I think that Great City Schools is a direction to go, but if we really wanted to do, as I think the incoming superintendent has said, to get right on the job of the strategic plan, I think the credibility that Alma established and the work that they did could be incorporated as part of this RFP. But the general work, definitely Great City Schools, but strategic planning, I'd like Alma to be a participant.
And you said that, what color did you say?
I said green.
She said green, okay.
So I'm going to go with, from my perspective, our definition of green is completed or substantially completed. And so because we haven't started it yet or done the self-assessment yet, I'm going to keep it a yellow for me. But that's, you've got Eve, me, and Brandon. Mr. Murawski, where are you?
Yellow.
Yellow? Ms. Jones?
Orange.
Orange. I feel a purple coming at some point, Dr. Moffett.
No, I was definitely going to come up with something different other than those three.
No, I think it would...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to keep going. Go back to you. I hope you didn't finish your...
I didn't finish, but it's, sorry, I had a moment. I think there's lots of questions that we have to ask about that. I'm still confused about the process for how we decided Council of Great City Schools. Not that I'm not a supporter of Council of Great City Schools, but then there were the questions about the Alma group. We haven't had a chance to talk about the RFP stipulations, although we did get it at request. So to me, there's still a lot of things that we need to sort of consider and finalize. So it's somewhere between a yellow and a red for me.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Vice President Jones and Dr. Moffett.
Well, I don't give it a green because clearly we're not done. And I'm concerned about a red because we have begun the process. We did have the RFP. We got several emails about, check it out, if you're, I mean, it was, we were emailed out by Brandon and Mike about questions regarding the RFP, if you have any concerns about it, which I don't think I responded, but I did see them. And so we selected Council of Great City Schools last week. I just don't think that we have selected the program. We have not started it. We have not done a first assessment as a board, and there is some question around role clarity, so, you know, as far as board members. So I just think that we're not, there should be maybe another choice.
Orange.
Orange, okay, I like the orange thing. But I mean, we did have, we had some discussion about it.
Yeah. So for tonight, I think the most important thing is that we surface areas where there's still more work to do and that we're accountable to ourselves and to the public to make sure these things happen. So more work to do. Let's make it orange for tonight. Why feel limited by categories? And I think we'll make sure that this is moving forward. And I think if this is a success, what should be true when we come back to this on the 9th? I know I'm being a little playful with the colors, but I do think that the core of this is something that's really important, which is that we're clear ahead of time on what we think matters most. We declare in advance what winning looks like, really concretely, and then we hold ourselves accountable for making sure those things happen. And I do think, I'm very happy to be working on this with you all because I think we are making some important movement on things that do. So, Ms. Bolton?
I would only add, I think we're supposed to be voting on it tonight, so that's in part why I was at green. But I'm happy to make it yellow since I still think there is a lot to be done, especially from the strategic planning part and the one sentence that would allow two vendors to do different things. So I'm happy to change my color.
Mr. Craig?
I just wanted to clarify that what we recommended and what we were in the talks with is, and what will be part of the proposal today in the budget, is the authorization to, for that one session that would have been within this budget period. So what we still have to do is negotiate that contract with Great City Schools, or if that doesn't, that recommendation isn't what we, as a board, decide we want to go with that contract, then we can always change that. But I think, at least right now, what we kind of talked about at the previous meeting was that the proposal fit with what we were looking for from a budget aspect as well and as well as the services they could provide. I do think, again, those materials were given out, and so I'm welcome to revisit as we get more concrete information from Great City Schools as to what that longer, bigger contract might look like.
And I think to your point, Mr. Craig, were you finished? I'm going to interrupt you. I think we could, when we get to that part of the agenda where we're discussing the treasurer's report, it may be a great chance to talk about this a little bit more because I want to make sure everybody feels like they have a chance to ask any question they want before they're asked to vote on an item tonight, but we can certainly come back to that as we keep going. Is there anything anybody wants on this point now on the priorities and where we're doing that folks want to mention before we move on?
I just don't see how we can vote tonight.
I think that that may or may not be something everybody agrees with, and I think we should talk about it.
Great.
Dr. Moffett?
Well, I just want to say, I absolutely love my colleagues. We have had an extended period of time in this space regarding the RFP from Mike and Brandon. So that was the time to get the questions out, to make sure that you were clear on what was, what were the expectations, and add anything to that that needed to be done. So if, I do think we're ready to vote, but if we do happen to delay this any, then we have to also be committed not to just doing the work and putting it here so the public can see it, but also about doing the background work so that we are prepared to vote timely and we don't have to keep continuing this discussion so that we can add extra things on it.
Okay, so to be continued, even in this meeting, probably in about 35 to 37 minutes from now. So thanks, everybody, for our board update. We're going to keep moving to hearing of the public. And so each speaker here will have two minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive, provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you'd like a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we do reserve the right to end that speaker's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel issues. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you. We likely this evening have a mix of some speakers who are here in person and some speakers online. We're going to start with the folks who are in person. We have three. They will be Ruth DeBono, followed by Bella Gord, followed by Ryan Shearer. If we could have all the speakers come down now, that way we can go right from one to the next, we'll appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I'm a senior at Walnut Hills High School, and I am here today with the Young Activist Coalition. We're here to discuss school discipline in Cincinnati Public Schools. Currently, our schools use punitive discipline, which punishes the offender rather than healing those affected by any actions that may take place in schools. Schools are meant to be a place, safe place, where students can learn and grow and develop and learn from all of their mistakes. But when students are pulled out of class or referred to school police for normal childhood behavior, it cycles their growth in this regard and makes it difficult for them to learn from their mistakes. Restorative and transformative justice are evidence-based alternatives to punitive discipline that have been successfully implemented in multiple schools districts. Just one example is the Oakland City School District in California. Punitive discipline has been shown in general and specifically in CPS to disproportionately affect Black, Brown, and other marginalized groups of students. In order to successfully implement restorative and transformative justice, we have to create an environment that encourages community and conversation and doesn't simply punish students for the things that they do in schools that are most likely just normal childhood behaviors that, you know, kids do all the time. Additionally, restorative and transformative justice cannot be successfully implemented with school police officers. In schools, police in schools criminalize our students, make students feel less safe in schools in many cases, and are a large part of the school-to-prison pipeline, which again disproportionately affects Black, Brown, and other marginalized groups of students and harms students going into their future and involves them in, you know, the criminal justice system and that stuff unnecessarily, and it can be really harmful for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeBono. Next, we have Ms. Gord. If I'm pronouncing your last name incorrectly, please make sure I'm right.
It's Bella Gordo.
Gordo, great. Thanks, Ms. Gordo.
Hi, it's good to see you guys in person. I'm here as president of the Young Activist Coalition, and we're fighting for police removal from schools and the implementation of restorative justice practices. If you're not familiar with restorative justice, which I'm sure you're all at this point, restorative justice seeks to correct and repair the harm created by misbehavior through communication, trust, and understanding. As a student, I hope that the board replaces our current harmful system of punitive justice that has not been found to decrease rates of misbehavior with a system of restorative justice that has been found to be effective. The key difference between these two practices is that one simply punishes the students for misbehavior, while the other shows students the harm that their action created and how to best resolve it with all involved parties. In addition, restorative justice is not compatible with school police, replacing schools to resolve conflict through arrest, restraint, court referral, and/or other general presence. They also reflect the punitive carceral system that is in direct conflict with restorative justice and the hope and aims of schools. If CPS were to implement restorative justice, it would be in line with districts across the country such as Chicago, New York City, Buffalo, Oakland, and Milwaukee. That practiced restorative justice in their schools with great success. No student in this district should feel as though they're unworthy of healing or the support of their school community. Thank you for your time, and I hope that the board will take action to implement these policies swiftly.
Thank you, Ms. Gordo. We're now going to hear from Mr. Shearer.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Shear. I teach 7th and 8th grade social studies at the Academy of World Languages. And in addition, I'm also the co-facilitator for the Teacher Leadership Program, which is an AFT and CFT program. We have teachers that apply to get into this program, and once they get in, they do, they commit to a one Saturday a month for the nine months of the school year, and they conduct an action research project on whatever topic they feel connected to in education. And typically, they end up working with another cohort member if they have similar interests. So we are at the end, close to the end of our program. In May, we have our Teacher Leadership Showcase, where all of our teachers will present their projects that they have done. And these projects are not just, you know, based off of their opinions. They, part of the research is data collection. We send out surveys throughout the whole district and try to collect data on whatever the topic may be. Some of these topics that are covered this year are school safety, anti-racist policy, and teacher recruitment and retention of teachers of color, advanced placement, student recruitment, and professional development with that, equity and inclusion through mentorship and employment, equity in elementary education, and teacher planning and preparation time. So in short, I'm here to invite you to our showcase because we feel that these topics, some of them are district-level, some are state-level, some are federal-level, mostly district and state-level, where we feel that part of the program and part of the research is that they do have to put together some possible solutions or what they feel might be a pathway towards solutions, some of the data that they've seen. So I would like to invite all of you to the showcase. It's May 4th at the Academy of World Languages. You don't need to write it down. I got a flyer right here for all of you. But it's 5 to 7 at the Academy of World Languages, about 10 presentations, about 10 minutes each. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shearer, very much. And for our online speakers, we're going to hear from Mr. Hoen.
Yeah, we have two speakers this evening. Our first speaker, Jason Munzel, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Mr. Munzel.
Hi, hi, thank you. My name is Jason Munzel, and I currently attend McNicholas High School. I'm a concerned community member and friend of many Cincinnati Public students. I'm also here with Young Activist Coalition to support our goal of building restorative justice and removing SROs from CPS. It's important to create a comfortable and safe place for all students, which SROs do the opposite of. We should not have police inside our schools because it builds the school-to-prison pipeline instead of setting students up for success. As I said, I currently attend McNicholas, which is a private school in Mount Washington, and we don't have any police presence in our schools. I feel safer because of this. I know my friends and classmates aren't going to be bothered by cops while at school. We're there to learn and grow as people and build relationships, and we shouldn't have to worry about the possibility of disciplinary action from police. I know each school community is different, but none of those differences should require police inside of schools. Thank you for your time.
You are. Last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Thank you so much. I am so glad that Ryan was there to invite you to the Teacher Leadership Program and give you an idea of the topics, but I want to give you a little bit more background on this program that we've been doing for many years. It's a program that started out of New York City during the early reform movement when they were having reforms with no teachers or people who worked with students' frontline involved with any of those processes. Our teachers meet for a full day once a month for nine months, and they complete an action research project throughout that time. They work with similar groups, but it's all data-driven, and it is a true action research project. And so they put in a lot of time researching ideas for our district, and it really would be appreciated if you could make the time for a couple of hours to come and listen to the teachers and the research that they have come up with. Many of the topics are topics that you all discuss on a regular basis. The second thing that I would like to talk about is the transportation RFP. I hope that we can get that right because it has negatively impacted student learning across our district, and CFT will... across our district, and CFT will be more than happy to do any type of leverage that you need. We will go to meetings. We will meet with the public. We will meet with students. We will do whatever is necessary so that our kids can get to school and they're not negatively impacted on their graduations because of transportation. As I have been saying for, since this fiasco started last summer, that the hardest part of a student's stay should not be them figuring out how they're going to get to school. The next thing I would like to talk about, because I do follow what's going on with the state, is House Bill 161, and I hope that the board will pass a resolution against this unjust bill that violates CPS's core values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. No teacher, in the bill, it says that no teacher shall receive continuing education credit or other credit required for licensure renewal for any semester or other program that teachers promote or endorse as diversity or inherently racist concepts. Well, CFT members largely engage in professional development and continuing ed courses focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this bill would be very negatively impacting all of the teachers in this district, not just the students, but also the teachers. And so we will do anything to help the board, and we hope the board supports us when we start reaching out to legislators to stop this bill from passing. And the last thing that I want to talk about is, a couple meetings ago, the board voted on the calendar, and it's for the 2223 school year, and somehow from the calendar committee to what you voted on, the calendar dates changed. And I, there are too many days within the calendar. We need to go back, and we need to look at that. And secondly, besides the number of days, because remember, teachers only have 191-day contracts. I think we're different than almost all of the other work groups, but we, that's the most that we're allowed to work, given our contracts. But on January 2nd, that is really the holiday that everyone is supposed to be following because January 1st is on a Sunday. So when a holiday is on a Sunday, it's recognized nationally on the Monday. So that would mean on December the 25th, which is a holiday within our contract, we should be off then on the Monday, which we are. But then the January 1st is on a Sunday, and somehow the calendar has us going back to school on January 2nd, which is really the recognized holiday. So I'm not sure how we bring this back to the board, but it has to come back to the board, and it has to be revoted on because it's incorrect and it's not within the guidelines of our contract or any of the other unions' contracts. So I'm not sure who could get with me to make sure that we could get this corrected now before people start making plans for their future. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sellers. Is that our, and that's our last speaker? Dan? Okay. Thank you all very much. We're going to move next into our approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from special meeting March 21, business meeting March 21.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. We're going to move next to our section on committee reports, where we have four. We're going to start with a report from the Audit Committee, from Ms. Bolton.
Thank you very much. From our Community Audit Committee, reporting these minutes, Kevin Vaughn from Plattenburg and Associates reported that they have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the Cincinnati City School District for the year ending in June 21, and they are happy to report, and we are proud to announce that it was a clean audit for the district, and that shows well on our staff, both financially and also in all administrative activities. The Audit Committee also was informed and required to sign a conflict of interest work for their members and have done so. There was an additional and ever-continuing report regarding the Benefits Committee update as we try to find ways to improve what it is that we do regarding benefits. Hopefully, we're getting close to the end of that report, and we'll see how that works out. Also, there was an Audit Status Report. The Chief Audit Executive Roberts provided an update regarding the status of the following internal audit projects. I won't repeat all of them, but it's part of her plan. For the year, there are nine different projects that were reported on. Those appear in your minutes. And then also, Ms. Roberts also reported to the Audit Committee the results of her efforts as requested by the Policy Committee regarding auditing of board policies on equity and excellence, anti-racism, parent and family engagement, and purchasing of goods and services. Also, there is a long list of audits that are in progress. So anybody that thinks that we're not being transparent or that people aren't looking into everything we're doing financially, the Ohio Department of Ed has an audit, and then has a number of bullets under it, the Ohio Auditor of State, the Ohio Department of Ed, again, all those are in the process or have been completed. Also, in the Audit Status Report, there is an audit being done regarding accounts payable, also regarding procurement card follow-ups, and financial updates, as you will appear and see in any of the monthly finance reports from the Finance Board Budget as well, Budget Committee as well. And then also, Ms. Roberts reported that the Audit Committee training is going to be taking place on April 27th for Audit Committee members. I submit and hope for approval. And thank again our fantastic Community Audit Committee, full of experts.
Thank you, Board Member Bolton. Do folks have any questions for Ms. Bolton about the Audit Committee? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move to the report from the Policy and Equity Committee, from Mr. Morosky.
Thank you. Policy and Equity met on March 18th in this room at 9:00 a.m. That committee is myself, Ms. Bolton, and Dr. Moffett. We talked about a whole lot of items, and I'll get through them as quickly as possible. Some we've already discussed with this body, so they're no longer germane. First, we discussed our implementation of Policy 2255 and how well or not well we are doing. And Policy 2256, those are equity and excellence in education policy and anti-racism policy. President Lindy was on the committee. He suggested that we do an audit of sorts of some key policies, and these were two of them. By and large, the report, I think, would probably be like a yellow or an orange, I would say, to use the parlance of the day. I think that's fair. I think it's fair, where there's things happening now that were not happening before the passage of 2256 regarding anti-bias, implicit bias, training, things like this. And so all of those are available in the minutes to see. Dr. Moffett brought up, and she was right to do so, I believe, that with the anti-racism policy, we are talking very explicitly about the disparate outcomes for Black and White students. Hard stop. We have our equity policy, you know, obviously is all-encompassing of a lot of different groups, minority groups, and to use dated terminology, in education subgroups. In anti-racism, we are talking about Black and White, and no system in America does anyone underperform Black or outperform White, and that is a very deliberate thing that we want to dismantle. And so I wanted to highlight that that was brought up. Our action was we advised administration to do a presentation about the DEI work plan and how we are going to measure that through a metric called DARE, not like the drug thing. It's a different one. So we will have a presentation in this body about that coming up. Next, Board Bylaws, Public Participation at Board Meetings. Mr. Huing, our General Counsel, updated our committee regarding revisions, hearing of the public, signing up to speak, et cetera, students speaking. We have already discussed this and approved the revised policy. Vaccine requirements for employees, we have discussed this in this body as well, but as a reminder, we are not asking for weekly testing for folks who are opting out of the vaccination, nor are we for new employees. However, if you are opting out of the vaccination, you'll be put on, you know, the list of the opt-outs, and if there becomes a situation where COVID is peaking again and we need to go back to that old policy, we will at that time. But for now, thankfully, things are looking good. We approved an alcohol waiver for the Cincinnati Chamber Orchestra, who we know can be unruly at times. That was a joke. We passed Juneteenth as a holiday at the last board meeting. These are dated minutes. Calendar was in the policy, in the Policy Committee, and previously had been in Student Achievement Committee and came to policy. We heard some information tonight that I found interesting, so I don't know what administration will want to do regarding that, or if we wanted to take it back up if the calendar did change. I don't know. It's the first I heard of this. Either way, action for that. We're going to do an additional review of calendars at April 15th meeting, which is this Friday. Lastly, we asked for approval of our committee work plan. When you pass these minutes, our work plan will be passed. Essentially, we are continuing with our yearly audit of existing policies, and a couple years ago, Ms. Bolton was on a committee with myself, and it was Mr. Lindy, and we had a long discussion about policies that are sort of administrative work and policies that are board work, and within those policies, under board work, which ones are more philosophical in nature and which ones are more about the work. And we're going to take a deep dive into those policies that we, you know, think govern our work and the things that we can control and try to, to use president's language, you know, hold ourselves accountable to what we say we're going to do. So I think that'll be a good use of our time in committee. And then attendance boundary lines, you've heard us talk about this a lot out of Policy Committee, and this one, I will end on this one, and it will probably include discussion at some point. As we look at the attendance boundary lines for our schools, it was, I think, in the committee's opinion, certainly in mine, speaking for myself, and I know Ms. Bolton, but I believe with Dr. Moffett as well, that there was an amenability to looking at these boundary lines. Do they continue to make sense? Do they need to be affected? The recommendation from the committee was that an ad hoc committee of board members be created to address and discuss school attendance boundary lines. Our president, Mr. Lindy, was in attendance at the meeting, and at that meeting, he recommended that administration look at this instead of creating an ad hoc committee. I only bring that up because, again, I think there probably warrants some kind of discussion at some point either tonight or in the future. I present the minute. Oh, one more, transportation policy review. We've been doing this for a long time. There's three major policies that sort of impact our work as a district. We have presented those to this body. They've been approved and moved forward, but I just wanted to highlight that to the minutes. I present the meetings as written.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jones?
What I'm about to say really does, is very well related to what Ms. Sellers was saying about the calendar, and I also had this conversation with, very briefly with Mr. Morosky and in more detail with Ms. Bolton. I understand fully that there are occasions when there's overlap across the committees regarding the work, but policy operates very differently than the other committees. And as I understand it, the task of policy, the work that policy gets really comes from, it comes as a result of the direction of the board. And, you know, and I'm looking at the tasks that, the responsibilities of the Policy Committee, yet in the minutes, this whole deal about the two-year school calendars, I learned prior to the SAC meeting that it had been, I learned through their minutes, that it was addressed. And so the issues that Ms. Sellers was speaking to, I became aware of in my conversation with Ms. Bolton and in review of the draft of the calendars. And I have asked Ms. Bolton, I asked Ms. Bolton about the rationale for having it in Policy Committee. It just didn't seem like a good fit. So when you use the term philosophy versus the work, I understand that policy is involved in the work of reviewing the policy, establishing the policy and what have you, but the philosophy of the work and the strategic focus of the work should lie in, across all the other committees. And so I did ask Ms. Bolton to allow the Student Achievement Committee to do the work of the calendars, where it has been for many years, as I understand. I don't know how it ended up in Policy Committee. I also, there are other subject areas which I have concerns about in terms of what Mr. Morosky is saying, philosophy versus the work, in the strategic focus and the nature of the work. And another example of that is the boundary lines for the schools. Yes, we do have, we have a policy that addresses enrollment and all of that, but my last recollection was that the topic itself lies with the Growth Committee. So I don't know where the switch has come. I'm having a hard time following the fact that Policy Committee is taking on more of the strategic planning and work of these areas. And rather than, and I didn't want to bring it up, I only brought it up because I don't intend to vote yes in accepting the policy minutes because I disagree fundamentally with some of the work that's being done, and I need the opportunity to ask questions and really look at the work that SAC is doing that really overlaps with them. And so we just had our meeting on Friday. We don't have our minutes there, but had a conversation with Mr. McDowell, who I asked to present, and it looks like he's having to present twice, and I don't understand that. And so if, Ms. Bolton, I asked you if you were okay with, and you said yes, okay with just letting SAC do the work on that, but it sounds like we have some work to do. And I did say to Mr. McDowell that we needed to have time because we didn't have time to really take a look at it. So these are the things that you shared with me that were concerns. I would only ask that topics like that, if they fundamentally belong in a different committee, then they should go. That, you know, so that's kind of where I am.
That's a clarifying question, that, Ms. Jones. Each committee has a work plan, right?
Yes.
So should, I was trying to answer for myself, how would I resolve this question about like, what should the committee's scope be?
Yes.
You know, as I understand it, the work plan should address that, right?
It does, and it does in a very broad sense. It does. It does. But if you look at the content, I mean, it's really planning that's going on in these things, and, you know, but like I said, there's also a lot of overlap, and I understand that, but we can't justify, you know, I don't want us to justify that all of this overlap, we're doing too strategic sort of paths around this. So, yeah, I hope that answers your question.
It does, yeah. Thank you very much. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer, and I thought part of our conversation took care of some of this, but happy to share publicly, if it's okay with the Chair of Policy. The reason that the school calendar was brought to Policy came indirectly as a result of the Policy Committee was responsible for reviewing and then recommending whether or not we would have Juneteenth. So the issue of calendar came in a month, and then as a question to the folks that presented Juneteenth, I asked about the school calendar for the year because in the last year and maybe the last two years, Student Achievement Committee had not discussed or recommended or reviewed student achievement, reviewed the calendar. So if they were going to do it or not do it, the calendar needed to come forward because we'd gone a year without notifying the public what the calendar was. The Calendar Committee, by the way, is a committee between the administration and CFT negotiating our school year, and it has to be approved by the superintendent, and it has to be approved by the board. And so the fact that it had not been in the proper committee, and it should be in Student Achievement, the fact that it came before us in Policy was directly, as a the fact that it came before us in policy was directly as a result of asking questions about, as a follow up to Juneteenth. So that's how it got there. Nobody changed anybody's work plan. Nobody was fooling around or having mission creep or anything. But when that was raised, then indeed, the administration properly came back with the proposal for the next two years so that we wouldn't be so delayed as we had been for the, the coming year. So I think that's part of it. And I think the, the issue of boundaries, we've been working on that. It, it was once in student achievement, but it's no longer in the work plan for student achievement. And that's several years ago, when it was, when we made some recommendations as we were forming our school, CANS, school, the Clifton area neighborhood school, because we had determined as a board to make that strictly a neighborhood school, in part with the advice, if you will, of Ms. Sellers, who had made us very clear that the north central part of the, the district was under a representative and had, and we also had the issue of Fairview across the street from the old Clifton School. So that's where it used to be. The reason that it's now in policy is because enrollment, and there are at least three, perhaps five enrollment policies that pertain to boundary lines and who, and how enrollment occurs, whether it's magnet or neighborhood. So that's why it's in policy, and that fits within the work plan. And the, the other piece of that enrollment is, the question was raised and asked of general counsel, who is responsible for drawing those lines, who is responsible for boundary lines, and it is the board. It is not the administration. And then the, then legal counsel also presented to us that, at least at that time, when we had the committee meeting, that the boundary lines had not been redrawn in a recent time post FMP. But since in a personal conversation, I believe the treasurer has said that somewhere during the FMP process, she was involved with redrawing the lines. But I don't even think the general counsel was aware of that. And redrawing lines or drawing lines and enrollment is impacting on something. As a finance chair, I should say, wait a minute, policy, don't do that because these boundary lines and enrollment are impacting our transportation issues. So there is this overlap, as you would imagine, on big, big things like a calendar or transportation. But the enrollment is, the policies are the reason it's there. And that's why finance has to share some responsibility with policy regarding transportation because policy writes those, policy writes the policies. And the transportation policy was, I think, originated either 1942 or 1948. There are 350 policies, and the vast majority of them really only impact whether or not our administration is implementing. And so what we did last year was divide those big issues to try to keep us thinking big. But the bigger you're thinking, probably the most overlap you'll see, whether it's a very minute or specific thing. So I think that, I, I'm sure that the, sure that the committee on policy is not unhappy to send back student, the, the, the year's calendar back to student achievement. But it was not, it was an encroachment that came as indirect, based upon us having to pass and advise on Juneteenth. But I think one of the interesting things that was raised in policy is that it was presented two years of a calendar, and one of those years would be outside the CFT contract, which is, I don't know that the board will have to decide if it wants to see that negotiations position by passing a calendar that's outside the CFT contracts. And it's the CFT and the administration that creates the calendar for our purview and hopefully agreement.
Go ahead, and then I have a thought.
Just a couple of brief comments. The way that I am, and I appreciate Ms. Bolton's comments, and I accept that she agrees that it should go, that this should, the calendar should be in SAC. I, you know, I believe firmly that the policies are driven by the work. The policies, the review of policies, the rescission of policies, all of that is driven by the work. But when you read the minutes, it looks like the policy committee is getting into the work. Now, I could be wrong, and I hear you saying there's a lot of overlap. The last time that, that I recall about the, the boundary lines, that was directed to the finance growth committee. And I, I, yeah, I remember that conversation here in the board meeting because you were pushing it and Ms. Bates was pushing it.
Absolutely.
And the board agreed to that. So I, and I don't know if it's still in finance, I don't know if it's still in finance and growth, but it looks like in the minutes that you all are basically, because you're looking at the maps, you're looking, to me, that is sort of preliminary to making policy decisions. Not that it's not important. So I'm saying all of that to say that maybe what we need to do is just agree that we have to talk to each other. These committees need to talk to each other about the work because the other piece of this, and then I'll be quiet, I don't think it's fair to ask staff to come in consecutive weeks to talk about the same thing. It just doesn't make sense. And so you're going to have another meeting on Friday, and, and I mentioned to Mr. McDowell, he has to do what he has to do if he was asked, and I guess he's supposed to be there. But it doesn't make sense. And then you all are giving him direction on how to address the calendar as well as student achievement. And so I, I just don't think we want to duplicate the work. So I'll, I'd said enough on that, but.
I appreciate that, Ms. Jones. The thing I was just going to offer, and then we'll go to Mr. Morosky, I promise, is I think with, with an eye towards the complexity of the issue and the other things we also need to talk about this evening. If there are any areas where committee chairs feel like there's still either an absence of clarity or real disagreement about what should or shouldn't be within scope for different committees, I think we should have a meeting about it. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
I actually had considered just putting it on the agenda for another meeting, not today's meeting. Yeah, so.
Or even, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with the two committee chairs, you know, and we can, and we can put our heads together and figure that out. Yeah. Mr. Morosky?
I was just going to say, as chair of the policy committee, so first of all, I, I, you're not going to get me to fight to keep the school calendar in our committee. So if you want it, you can have it. I don't care. Like, it came there as.
Well, don't make it sound so unimportant.
Yeah, no. No, 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 no. It is, it's important. It's, you know, you know, I do think there was, you know, there were a number of issues that created a perfect storm of it coming to the committee. And yeah, it's fine if it's in SAC. I don't particularly care where it is, as long as it gets done. It makes sense to me, quite frankly, why it came to policy, but it doesn't need to be there.
But it didn't come to policy. Policy took it.
Well, it, it came to us organic.
And I talked to the previous SAC person, chair, who gave me good insight into what they had done. Now, maybe, maybe people didn't like it or didn't agree with the calendar or whatever. But still, the first step in that process is to clarify with the committee where it belongs for that, that, that's, yeah.
Yeah, totally. So that, that's fine with me. I don't mind that at all. I, I do want to speak a little bit to the boundary lines, which I do believe belongs in policy. The reason I shook my head when you were talking about finance and growth is it actually began in student achievement committee in my very first year on this board, five years ago. And this conversation has been going on for a long time. It has actually made the rounds in every single committee except, I guess, at this point, health and safety, which I think speaks to how important it is.
We don't want it. We don't want it. Let's be clear.
And, and with all due respect, you know, this, this issue, these boundary lines has been in all of our committee minutes. This is not new. And this is not like, should not be news to anybody. We've been talking about this. But secondly, I would just like to highlight the minutes, again, that the reason the ad hoc committee was suggested was because of this conversation. And we tried to head this off by suggesting it. Now, again, President Lindy had his own opinions. The law would seem to dictate that we make that decision, however. The only other piece I would add in defense, I don't know if that's even the right word. I don't think it's the right word. But in, for the boundary lines being in policy, is that all of these issues, specialized union enrollment, students of CPS employees, West End and East End, I'm not going to go through them. They're all in the minutes, are policies of the district explicitly. And, and, and who partakes and how they partake in these, this laundry list of offerings we have, because we are so unique, comes down to, quite frankly, how the lines are. So I, to me, there's nothing more substantial to what we offer than those lines. What we offer all resides in policy as far as who gets in. I realize, not speaking broadly. But again, that's why at the end of that conversation, it was suggested by all of us that this become an ad hoc committee of board members, because it was not something, it's, at your point, that we shouldn't be getting down in and doing the, the work of in that committee, that the philosophy of it, I think, is ours. But I, I don't, I agree that I don't think the work is, which is why the recommendation. I just wanted to highlight that part.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. I do want to try to move us forward here. I think the one thing I want to just flag for everybody is, is I want to try to push as hard as I can to create a firewall, if you will, between management and governance for us as a board and for committees. And, and as I understand the, the division, you know, our job as a board or as committees is to get clear on what the outcomes are that we're going to hold the administration accountable for. And the administration figures out what is the best way for us to get there. It's their call. And then we're holding them accountable to make sure that those outcomes actually happen. So I just, as, in terms of what are the different tools we use to decide what should or shouldn't be in scope, what should be with one committee or a different committee, what should be with the administration versus with a committee, I think the line I want to keep really pushing on is, our job is governance, administration's role is management, and everything is going to be better for kids and families, the clearer I think we can get on that. If this is a last comment in less than a minute, is that, will that work, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think you expanded the issue from, from issues among the committees as to who's doing what, to what we are supposedly hiring the great city schools people to help us learn about what governance is. I'm just going to tell you, as a 15-year veteran, where there's a firewall between administration and the board, we have issues like transportation, which we have failed. And again, I thank the new administration for listening more attentively and being much more aggressive about trying to get the will of the community and the will of the board enacted into administration for transportation. But I look forward to us having this bigger discussion about governance. But I think we've resolved the issue, not resolved, but at least we're going to have a talk about who's doing what among committees. But I will also say, if we really keep the board in the governance role, you're going to see policy increase in its importance instead of being an afterthought like it was 10 years ago. And if you're talking in terms, last comment, if you're talking in terms of transportation, as finance chair, I just assume not have to go back to policy. But when you look at the three policies that the administration and the board have, have adopted and, and two of the three have adopted, the reality is, that's where we should be working is in policy. And it's, it's mind bending, the difference between these new policies and transportation versus the ones dating back to 1940 something or other. So it's all good work, but I think we should have a conversation among the chairs or whoever or what have you. So I think this has been useful.
It's a good topic for the, for the discussion that we have about governance. I really do believe that. Yeah.
And so as, as hard as it may be to see, that is two of the four committee reports that we have this evening. So we're going to move to the budget, finance, and growth committee. I might ask if Ms. Bolton could present the report from the committee in two or three minutes?
Probably not. So I will do it as quickly as I can. I've even highlighted tonight.
Highlights sound great.
Yes. But of course, like many teenagers, I've highlighted everything, but I'll, I'll skip over. At any rate, the report of the budget, finance, and growth committee, speaking of growth, Madam Vice President, the, we have been, the administration told us that finances are on track with no significant or unexpected issues. We've had the report that we have a number of grants we have that are part of our revenue and in their 18th month cycle, I think. There's public grants, there's 34 of those, and there are eight that are non-public and there are, excuse me, there are eight that are COVID-related, and there are nine. And we've gone through almost 60% of the grants, which is actually pretty good. ESER will continue to give us revenue through 2024. We have community reinvestment agreements that are posted in the minutes for us. The most important thing that came up, I would say, is the need, and we've already mentioned it briefly, and that is the need to create a, a new contract with SORTA. And that the, that was recommended that the new contract be done in light of our current circumstances, as well as importantly enough, based upon new transportation policies. And also probably the need for a SORTA contract has to also somehow be kind of publicly shared and communicated in those negotiations between SORTA and the school district. And hopefully with some sort of guidance and involvement and, and pressure, if you will, from city council and the county commission, which appoints the SORTA board, because it's a SORTA board that has responsibility for the contract, just like it is the board, school board that has responsibility for the contract for the district. So that's an important thing that has to be happening very soon. SORTA is pushing to have those negotiations begin very quickly. And our issue was that we don't want to do it, negotiate until we actually have a wonderful proposal from our administration. Also, it was reported that a number of our school, of school districts are being penalized, as we have reported here last month and, and about three months before that, because the state law from the state legislature that doesn't really care very much for urban school districts informed everyone that charter schools and other non-public schools don't have to inform us of those sorts of things that we need to know in order to schedule our routes. And it is costing us some millions of dollars. It's been reduced somewhat. And also, as an update, Columbus City is suing and went into court to try to get this changed. And they had some preliminary success in a court case that we were not a part of, but it does hopefully impact us. And then finally, trying to get through this, we had an absolutely stunning presentation, not only about the budget, but the idea of the real massive review of our ESER funds, because things have so radically changed, may need to defer or repurpose, and that is taking place. Also, the idea of engagement efforts with our public to influence the, the budget outcomes, if you will. And then also, we talked again about levy options, and we'll be coming back next meeting and asking, recommending a particular way of doing this levy. We would rather do that prior to the, the arrival of our incoming superintendent. So the first thing she's asking of the, of the community is not a levy. But indeed, we'll, we'll let the outgoing superintendent take, share that burden with the community. But it is important, and we will have a recommendation. And then also, we have two committees as well, the tax incentive review committee that we need assignments for and appointments. We'll be coming back to get those appointments next time. And then also, it's been suggested too, that there is a tax abatement ad hoc committee that the treasurer has worked with some members of city council, and the finance committee will be serving on that as well. And then we had one more public comment. The public comment was to request that in the new levy that we have, not new levy, but the renewal levy that we have be a 10-year levy, not a continuing levy. Because in the last 15 years, the only levy that has failed has been one of those that is a continuing levy. So I submit and hope for approval. Your addendums, I think, very importantly, levy options, the CRAs, description of the grants, but also, for the first time, you know, at least this year, I know of, we have a listing of the capital improvement projects with pictures, diagrams, and what have you, which has not been the recent practice. But when we were living through the FMP, where we went through 60 some schools, we would see those sorts of stages of the facilities efforts, not towards the very end, but throughout. So I think that's something as we, as we look at some more capital. And that referred to Hyde Park, Walnut Hills, and PRM. I submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any questions on the finance, budget, finance, and growth committee report? Moving on, our chair is not here for health and safety, but is there another member of that committee who would like to share a report from that meeting?
I will do that, and I will be very brief. I'm going to try my hardest to be two to three, well, three minutes. I'm a little long with it. So, and I think, remember Bolton took five minutes, so I might take four. Anyway, so, remember Weinberg is not here. She's the chair, and I'll go through just a little bit of this. We had a presentation We had a presentation, a really, really good presentation by Cincinnati Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. We did recommend that they come and give a presentation to the Board. They have a SMART program that will help parents and adults prevent child gun deaths and injuries. They are asking, recommending and asking for resolution from boards across the nation, not just here in Ohio, but specifically us. And so we recommended that they come and give a presentation, so that you all can see what we saw and learn more about the SMART program. We also got a report from our government liaison, Mr. Kearney, and he talked about bills that are coming up, and at that time, because we didn't have, we haven't had a meeting since March 21st, been a while. At that time, we didn't have movement on some pretty critical things that are now coming up that I think everybody is pretty much aware of, House Bill 616, which is the sneaky, don't say gay bill, but that Florida just went through. But we, he talked to us about, so we, we will have to get an update with him on that. But we talked about the voucher program, the Critical Race Theory Bill, House Bill 327, at that time, which is what we were pretty much worried about. We did talk about K-12 mental health concerns and some things that are coming up at the state level regarding that. He informed the committee about 327, 497, which eliminates student retention under the third grade reading guarantee. He talked about 582 and the amendments of all of that. The public can go look at this committee report. I hate to read stuff to people that they can get, but go look at the committee report because it's all down here too, but I'm just going to give you a bird's eye view. He talked about five, House Bill 583, which was to issue substitute educator licenses for the need for substitutes that we've recently had. Then, then, we had a really good presentation by our Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Bell, and he talked about, he gave some really good kudos to some staff members that had done some really extraordinary things for the month of March. Go back and read that report and look at that data because it's all there. Let's see, go back. Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait. We had a kick rock, kick, kick self-presentation from Jessica Shelley, Director of Food Services, about the USDA requirements for the food that we've got in our buildings and how it is really, really good. They've got a new salsa provider, so you guys should check that out. Good food is coming, good food is coming. So we did talk about that. We had, we had Jessica come and, and give us some data on that. Then we talked about student conduct and discipline, and we know we have some work to do. Assistant Superintendent Bundy gave us a really good report. We all recognize we got some work to do, and we're working on it. That's the cool thing about it, is that we're really, really working on it. And so, go and read that report in the committee report because you are going to be completely talked about that too, and the work that, that the staff is doing. And I think the last thing, oh, wait, Ms. Alano reported the update, the pedestrian safety at the schools. We had a great report on that. Got some movement around improving the safety in our buildings. The city has been calling Ms. Alano back and working with her finally, and we are kicking tail with the safety of schools and the pedestrian safety. So we got a list of stuff that is on her list of things to do. Vision Zero Advisory Committee gave us a small update. We're going to hear a little bit about that later on. We had a hearing of the public, and I think that's, I think that's pretty much it. But for those that needed a little bit slower, go to the Cincinnati Public website, get our Health and Safety Committee report, because we've got a lot of great addendums that I can't show you here, but there's some charts in here, the SMART program is defined, the USDA meal requirements and what they're doing with the, the money that they're receiving for food, and they're even, they're even talking about having a program where the kids can grow their food because we've got agriculture programs in our schools, and they can eat it. So I'm telling you, you guys missed a great presentation because it was, it was doing really good. So, check that out, and I think that's it. Was about four minutes.
It was great, Dr. Moffett.
Hopefully a little bit more animated than Ms. Bolton over there.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Moffett on the Health and Safety Committee report? Ms. Bolton?
Maybe it'll raise this when we have a transportation, on the crossing guard safety piece and the pedestrian piece, which is so important, I'm just, will need to know about the number of crossing guards we have and the number of vacancies. I don't know if that's come up, it's come up somewhere along the line, I think maybe in some transportation, but I don't know if that came up in your.
It did not. We did not speak about crossing guards, the safety.
The very first meeting.
We did talk about it at the very first.
We didn't get, we not in this past meeting.
Okay, okay, good.
No, we talked about, if you guys would like to know, we talked about the Schroeder doesn't have a crosswalk, you know, like we talked about Pleasant Ridge Montessori, and they still have that whole, they need a raised crosswalk, they've got some safety issues at that intersection. Cairns, we've got, we talked about Walnut Hills, there needs to be a crosswalk at Dix Mountain Salsa, Performing Arts needing to have a crosswalk on 12th Street, so those are some of the things that we talked about.
Super, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Moffett? Okay, thank you. I do need a motion to accept the committee reports.
Devoted.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. I'm giving Mike a second to capture who that was. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I would like to recute. Aye on all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Committee reports are approved as presented. We're moving now to the section of the agenda for announcements. Does anyone have any kudos that they would like to share? Mr. Morosky?
I'd like to give a kudos to our friends from the Young Activist Coalition for being back with us in person and for being relentless and staying on top of us and helping us to be better, as Dr. Moffett noted. You know, there are some changes taking place. I like to think you all have a large part to do with that, and at least in my opinion, we can still do better. There are too many black and brown students being disproportionately punished, so I appreciate you all keeping it on our radar and stayed in our faces. It helps.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any other kudos? Dr. Moffett?
I want to give a kudos to the great art show that we have in the lobby, that, I, I swear, I'd like to commission some of these students to buy some of their artwork because it is awesome. I don't know how long is it going to be there? Because if you are watching and you can get down here and see some of this artwork from schools across our district, you will be amazed, just like myself. May the 2nd, so put it on your to-do list to come down here and check out. You don't have to do anything special, just sign in and walk up and down the hallway, and you will, you will really, really be smiling because it's great. Kudos.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moffett. Other kudos? Okay, I understand that tonight we do not have any retirements. On announcements, I wanted to say, Ramadan Mubarak, Happy Ramadan to Muslim members of our community, and Hugs Mayach for a happy Passover to anyone celebrating. Any other last announcements? Okay, so we're going to move then to presentations. I understand we have one presentation tonight, which is going to be on transportation, from Ms. Alano. Is that right?
Yes, we're so excited to present this evening. We have the results of the optimization study, and then at the end of the month, you will get a complete proposal of the transportation study. So Ms. Alano will lead us with the results of where we are right now. Thank you. Skip to page four. One more. Thank you. So, this is our transportation timeline. I'm happy to say that we are right on time, right on schedule, and as interim Superintendent Tiani Amat mentioned, I will have the business proposal to you this month. Next slide, please. So we continue to have our regular meetings with SORTA. We had eight high school principals join our meeting on Friday to share their concerns. SORTA has been very responsive, put some things into place for next fall, and the reports that we've asked for, the on-time performance report, I should have the data to share with you at the next meeting. Next slide, please. So, this is what I'm really excited to share with the Board today. So the optimization study, the, pretty much has concluded at this point, it's just tweaking here and there. But I'm proud to say that adding 22% more kids on the yellow bus, that's the seventh and eighth graders, we're still able to reduce the number of buses that we're going to need. Our status quo right now is 319 buses, and we are, I believe we could take that down. Actually, we were told 301, plus or minus a tweaking, so that's why we put on here 305. This is actually so, so great because we're looking at a $1.6 million cost savings, which to me, the $300,000 that we spent on, with this company, has really turned into a very, very nice ROI. What I did want to say is, initially, we thought we were going to have to spend another $3 million to have seventh and eighth graders on the bus, but not only are, we're not going to need that, we're actually going to save money because of the number of buses that we're going to need, they're actually going to shrink. And this includes adding the seventh and eighth graders, which is about a 22% increase in ridership, kids who live one mile or more, and all the high school start times between 8:00 and 8:45. So we have the late start times that were starting at 9:15, have all been moved back a half hour, which means the, the time that they get out of school has all moved back by half an hour. Can't tell, I'm grinning from air to air. Okay, next slide, please. So, one of the things that've come up in our meeting with SORTA is that bus stop, and I have a picture of it down in, by Euler. Our kids take the bus at Eighth Street and Depot, and what that means is they have to like speed walk or run across Eighth Street, and it's not the, it's, it's not the safest situation. Low behold, I get an, an email from the city, and they're applying for a federal grant, and that, and they've asked us for a lot of support, which I provided, and basically they're looking at West Eighth Street, State Lynn, one of the communities is Lower Price Hill, and the goal is to enhance intersections and just overall safety improvement for the community. So, we're really excited about that. I share that with SORTA. They too are very excited about that. So hopefully, they'll be able to get that grant, and this problem that we've had for many years will be resolved. We are going to, we're continuing to have our meetings with SORTA. Our next meeting, we're inviting the remaining high school principals that were not able to join us the last two sessions, so I'll have some additional reports for you then. Questions for me?
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Lindy. Thank you, Ms. Alano. This is awesome. This may show monaite, perhaps, but is there any reason why, and I asked this like four years ago, and three years ago, and two years ago, is there any reason why you can't just move the bus stop to State and Eighth, where there is a crosswalk and a stoplight, instead of like, you know, just put it in another stoplight like 40 yards?
Okay, so there is a bus stop already there.
I know, yeah, I know. So, why can't we just stop there?
It's, it's like, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line, and so, you know, that's the shortest point to them. The kids want to get to the, the closest stop versus having to go all the way down to the end to State Street and then cross the street. So.
You know, hey, look, it's their, yeah, you know, it's their money, I just, you know, okay?
We, my understanding is that the principal has had conversations with kids to remind them, look, there is another bus stop, we want you to do this safely. It does take, you know, a little bit longer, maybe a minute for them to do that, to take that extra walk. But that's not the only issues I think that they're having with just traffic in that area, and I think they just want to improve for the, the whole community down there.
Totally. I, I get that, and I wasn't suggesting stop the light, but that, I totally agree, I lived out, down around there, I get, it's a nightmare, it's great, it just seems strange, but it's their money, it's great. Good for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Morosky. Other questions from board members? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm smiling as, as you are. Just a couple things, several things, real quickly. This, on the optimization study, which is great, you know, we did that study, but we, we knew not to go ahead with the study regarding the seventh and eighth with the two different, I've been working through this, and I appreciate it. Are you saying that this, the optimization study included these four bullets that are on your presentation, the 3,000 seventh and eighth graders and the high school start times?
Yes, so, we actually had several options, right? So this was option G, and so, based on option G, was adding the, the seventh and eighth graders on the yellow bus, it was making sure that all of our high school start times were between an 8:00 and 8:45, they're still healthy times, but they're not starting at 9:00. That the riding time, which I failed to mention, was going to be 55 minutes or less. So, based on what they've been able to do, 96% of the students are going to be able to get home within the 55 minutes. We have another 2% of riders that will be getting home a little bit over an hour, like an hour and 15 minutes. So what, so what we're looking at is, who are those kids? Are they the kids who, you know, are going to a high school of choice, they might live on the other side of town? So we are going to be digging further into that. What I do want to tell you is for the babies, on average, their ride time is 23 minutes. So these are pre-K to six. So, as I said, this is just like the initial preliminary data, and then as we see this data and we have questions, we want to be able to make sure that, that business plan includes a very comprehensive plan so that you have all, you're informed. And this is just for the yellow bus, so the other part to that, now we're going to not have seventh and eighth graders on the metro, so that's going to be a reduced cost, and also reduce congestion at the bus stops because you don't have 3,000-plus kids waiting for, for the buses as well.
Well, and I think that's, that's very important, and I know that the Board felt really strongly about the seventh and eighth grade, that's where we were concentrating. Again, I think I've been the most complimentary of any of the Board members about what you've been able to do. I do think this represents a partnership between the administration and the Board to get through this, that has been over a year and a half of, of effort, and it's just remarkable, this 55 is instead of the 75 minutes. Did you, on the miles, eligibility starting at one mile for seventh and eighth graders?
Yes.
So is that a change, or is, and do we classify them as high schoolers, and so they were a mile and a quarter? Help me out with that.
Yeah, the seventh, so, the current, the status quo is K to six who live one mile or more, and seven through 12 who live 1.25 miles or more. And so, using the notes that the committee had sent to us to inform the scenarios that we asked the company to do, we chose one mile. What does it look like at one mile for all of our yellow bus riders? And this is what they were able to come up with.
That's excellent. That's absolutely fabulous. And then, just a few more things right here, the start times in the high schools have, they haven't been notified yet, right, which or which, or?
No, they haven't, so, because they will be now.
Exactly.
Now, they've been coming, we did share some of this with them at the last SORTA meeting, right? So, they've been part of the process. And so, I told them, I said, I have to let the Board know first, but the ones who were there on Friday, we had gotten the results back from the, so they were very excited that we were able to push that back a half an hour.
Have, have we been able to meet that deadline regarding the charter kids and non-CPS kids being notified, or is that still kind of on the burner?
So, we're still waiting for them to, they have to tell us, so we're still waiting for those. I mean, they still, you know, the initial was April 1st, but they still have some additional times. We are actually going to be meeting with them to just discuss the changes in, in how House Bill 110 and how we want to work cooperative with them, cooperatively with them, and make sure that. sure that their eligible students have the transportation so that they can get to school as well. So, those meetings are going to be coming up soon.
And then, have we received all the data that we've requested from Sorda?
So, that will be coming. We talked a little bit about that Friday. I know for sure the new optimization reports that use their revised methodology, they assured me that I'd have that data so I can share with you at the next meeting.
Great, and then my last, my last point is that, you know, we have, we have, and are discussing, I'm sure, the idea that we are willing to compromise on the extra routes, and indeed, based upon your work, been able to remove the seventh and eighth graders in need of extra routes, and then also using the transfer piece. So, I would hope we would start, maybe we can do that in finance or whatever this week or whenever it is, but the idea that we have compromised on the extra routes and they maintain they can't do it, they've kind of gaslighted us about it, it's only about drivers, it's not, it's about their business plan. But that would change the number of kids that would need extra routes based upon the transfers. So, I, I hope we can be talking about that as we go further into this. But congratulations, this is great work, and I'm pleased, and I know there's still a long way to go. Will the special needs kids be able to get to the high schools and we can still stay at that, those times? So, I know that was creating the, no, excuse me, there's, that was creating part of the problem of getting those start times at the right time. So, it's great that you've been able to address that.
Yeah, this is, this covers all of our babies, so the K to eight on a yellow bus, plus the PK through 12 special needs student.
Super, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Ms. Jones, and then I have a couple.
Just a quick comment. I just want to say thank you, I did owe Ms. Bolden's concerns and positive comments about where to work. I remember last year when we were struggling with this, and one of the things that we agreed upon, it was that there were things that we had to do ourselves. Not that we don't want to have a partnership with them and we don't want to sort of force the issue with them about some of our concerns, but that we felt obligated to take care of our students. And I think I attribute that to the hard work that, that you've done and appreciate the thought that board members are given to this and, and the work that you've done to make sure that we've reached that goal. So, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I wanted to offer my thanks as well, Connie. Did you have anything, Mr. Craig, before I go?
I, I just want to say, I really appreciate seeing this, and I also think this is an example of when we do it the right way, we can actually find out the results are better than we expected. And so, I think I would look forward to being able to do more things like this where we are able to put in some efficiencies into system to make things better. And so, I think that's what we're seeing, is that we're going to deliver a great service for the students, cheaper costs, but because we're doing it in a better, more systematic way.
If I could say, it's, it's really been a group effort, it really has.
Thanks, Mr. Craig, thanks, Connie.
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah.
I just want to also let the board know that we are setting up, a meeting up with Ms. Wright with Sorda so she can be a part of those discussions. One of the first meetings we had was an introduction to Ms. Solano, so she is aware of the process from beginning to end, and then I can pass the baton and she can take it from there. I also would like to respond to the question, which is around safety, around the crossing guards. We have a total of 144 crossing guards with only 98%, 98 of those 144 are filled. So, yes, so we have to do some recruiting and have some discussion around that, but we are working with the city, Mr. Bell is a part of that discussion as well.
If people are watching this, or the press is covering this, where can people apply to be a crossing guard?
With the city.
Great, thank you very much. Now, I'm, I'm going to get just a couple comments in from Ms. Solano here before I, before we move on, because I didn't get a chance to ask my questions, I'm going to do that real quick. One was, I, I wanted to just make sure I was following this correctly around the cost savings from the optimization study. So, I saw that it was 1.6 million, is that per year?
Um, yes.
So, it's much more than 1.6 million. I mean, we're, we spent $300,000 on the study and we're going to see, our savings of 1.6 million annually.
Right, well, right, because that was based on what we projected would be the additional cost if we just did status quo and just got extra buses. And then, the additional reduction of like 15 buses, the cost of that. And so, as a result, it, it was saving us 1.6 in the sense that we were looking at what we were going to have to initiate, have to spend extra to put these kids on the bus. So, yeah, so, in a sense, based on this year's budget, if we had not put the seventh and eighth graders on the bus, we'd probably even, you know, be saving a lot more from this year's budget.
Sure, I just think that's, it's, it's a long-term deal, and I think that's, I think that's, that's really fantastic, and I wanted to say thank you. The, the last things I wanted to check on was when we, when we had the priority-setting conversation for the three months between March 7th and June 13th, transportation was one of the things that rose up to one of the most, foremost important, so I'm so glad that we're talking about this. And when we, when we as a group said, you know, here's what we want to see three months from now, we said two things, one was that in whatever plan we adopt, there's clear measures of success for next school year, whether that's about ride times or whether that's about, I imagine, ride times and how long you have to walk to bus stops and, and family satisfaction, whatever you all decide, but in the, in the plan that gets proposed, well, we see not just how much it costs and what it does, but what the outcomes are.
Yes, we can do that, we, we can come up with some indicators that are measurable.
That's great, that's great, I think I will, I know that, that's the first thing I'd, I'm excited to ask questions about. And then, the, the other piece there that we said in the, the board priorities was that they be informed meaningfully by community feedback. Whatever, whatever the transportation plan is, and I'm, I'm not asking for a report on that tonight, I just wanted to surface up, these are the things that I, I hope we ask about when we're evaluating whatever plan comes forward, is it, is it really clear on what winning would be for next year? And can we say with some confidence that it really does reflect not just what we think is important, but also what the community thinks? And if we can, if we can check those two boxes, and I have every reason to believe we will, I think it'll be a wonderful plan.
And I would just like to add, we have gathered data from the community ahead of time, so that's what has lent direction for decisions. A prime example of that was the seventh and eighth graders getting on the, the yellow bus. But once a final plan is presented to the board, we can also do some sort of survey, but the community has been a part of this process from the very beginning.
That's great, and I, I'm not, I'm not requesting one way to do it, there are lots of ways to do it, I just think that those were the, I think the criteria we said we'd use when we adopt the final. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so if that ends our presentation section, I think we're ready to move into Board Matters. We have a couple different items tonight. Several of these are on here from Mrs. Weinberg, for example, the first two items, discussion of gun storage and Vision Zero. Is there another board member who'd like to present those, or I'm also happy to table them until we have her next time?
I think that, that was in regards to the presentation from Moms Demand Action.
Okay.
And wanting to have them come and present at a board meeting.
Okay.
So, I think that the request is just, can they come and present to us at, at a board meeting? The SMART program.
Mm-hmm. SMART and Moms Demand Action?
Yes.
It'd be good to have the Vision Zero folks too. Was she requesting a presentation?
For the Vision Zero, that was at the request of Board Member Jones, that said we needed to have some continuity from the work that you all did, excuse me, around Vision Zero, so that we could be informed in our dealings with the city moving forward.
Report to you, to the committee.
Yes.
Well, and also, it ties very closely, I think, with number three.
Which was mine.
Yes, because there, it was being discussed how we might partner with the city, and so the suggestion was, well, let's first talk to the full board about where we are with Vision Zero and get some information, and then the next part of that was a question about reinstating the work group with the city and CPS.
Do you want to speak then to that, Dr. Moffett, a little bit?
On number three?
Yeah.
Yes, well, the city has actually, you know, it's no secret, we've, they're wanting to have a relationship with us, and so, excuse me, in speaking with Board Member Jones, specifically in the Health and Safety Committee, but then in asking for direction on other things, there was a committee that was established that did, that provided continuity between the district and CPS previously. And so, we've been able to direct and help Ms. Solano get some things done, make some connections with the city, because they've asked, hey, what, what are you all working with? We give her Connie, but we wanted to formalize that, and so, whatever that looks like as far as reinstatement or to develop something new. I will say is also, they, the, I was talking to one of the council members who shared that a lot of our students, our CPS students get recognized by the city through resolutions and proclamations, and they thought it would be really nice to have, once a month, CPS students recognized. And so, I thought that is something in addition to what we're talking about regarding Health and Safety, that could be formalized as well with the same committee.
So, it sounds like that there's probably some, some history that folks might share if they'd like about what this used to look like? Yeah, Ms. Jones?
Well, last year, probably late summer, we did bring that to the full board because it was requested by a former, former council member, Betsy Sunderman, through a conversation that I believe she had with a former board member, and wondering if, about the status of the, what was it, the ACES? Is that what it was called?
It was ACES.
ACES Committee. And that ACES Committee was a committee of the board plus the Education Committee, which council no longer has. I think they restructured how they do that work. And we used to, that, that group used to meet on a quarterly basis, and we made the decision last year to defer that at least until after the elections, and said we could revisit it. And so, that's how we came to that conversation. Now, I, I think it is worthy of a conversation from the full board about whether or not there's an interest in doing that, or how we might partner better or differently with city council. I think what I was gauging at that time is that there wasn't a whole lot of interest in reestablishing ACES as it was structured, but I don't know, that's why we said let's forget.
Yeah, that's really helpful, and I think, just having spoken to some people already and kind of watching our new board members over the course of the campaign season, and also on when people were sworn in, and how much wonderful, I think, shared ownership there was for the outcome of the fall election, and also that I think, yeah, please tell me if I'm wrong, but that all of us want to leverage every resource possible on behalf of the kids and families in CPS. My hunch is that some kind of effort to see what we can do together is something everybody would support. I mean, is there anybody who's opposed to the idea of there being some formalized way that we try to coordinate to better align with the city?
I would, I would, I'm not opposed to it, I was, I was glad when we suspended it, when we suspended it, and then waited till we had a new board and there was a new council and possibly a new mayor, there are a number of easy things we could do, a lot better, and then there are very pressing issues. One of them is this transportation, we're going to need city council to help us with this crossing guard thing and bus stops, and also to try to advocate for our students with Sorda, since they appoint half of the Sorda board. And then, keep in mind, the treasurer's already lining up some effort, as I recall, and we reported in the minutes about CRAs and what have you with the, so there's, they're very heavy lifting kind of issues, and I, I think a quarterly meet, an actual, whether it's, maybe not be joint, but maybe it would be a, a board members that could attend, and certainly whichever committee that the council thinks would be best. I think it's very important to do that.
So, my proposal with that, and Dr. Moffett, tell me if this, if this works with you, we can do something different, is to have maybe two board members who would want to serve as a group to figure out with the city what, what name this group should have, how it should be constituted, how often it should meet, so that that, they don't have to make, figure out some of the details here with all seven of us, but could try to work something out with the city and then come back with a proposal, we could talk about it, I think likely adopt it, and then move forward. So, then we need two people. I would like to ask Dr. Moffett to be one of them, if she's willing to do that, and we give you one collaborator. Is there anybody who would, who would like to do that alongside Dr. Moffett?
Hey, don't everybody rush to do it, I, I can tell that you guys are excited.
Mr. Craig, fabulous, it's the dream team. We have Dr. Moffett and Mr. Craig, who are going to build a new future with the city of Cincinnati. And I think, I think, I think that's, that's an unambiguously good thing.
Let's not call it ACES, though?
No, adverse childhood experiences is not going to be the name of our pros kid. Yeah, no, a better name.
So, now, what does that, can you all share with me, what does that look like? Does that look like something that we bring back on a, we, we report monthly to the full board? What is, what has that been in the past? What do we want it to look like? And I'll, and I'll give you an example, Vice Mayor Kearney has healthy neighborhoods, and so, she's asked the question, what do you all need? What do your kids need for this healthy neighborhoods committee that they have? Mike, you have a question?
No, just to respond to, I think, if I, if I understood it correctly, the, the task from the president is that their representatives from this body work with representatives from the city to figure out what the, the larger body looks like, because it would, we're not talking about two folks working with city council and reporting to us, we're talking about all seven of us, working with all nine of them on substantive issues like four times a year or something, that's what the ACES was.
Yeah, well, what I just heard is that we didn't want to do ACES.
No, we don't, but...
But, but my, but my question was not to have just a report from those two people, I'm saying, my question is broader than that. What does, what do we want that to look like? Do we want that to look like a formalized meeting from, or is that what we're just exploring?
That's what you all are going to, I think, figure out.
Okay.
I will say, I will say, if I may, I'll speak for myself, when I say I don't want it to look like ACES, what I mean is I don't want it to look like a photo op for a few city council folks like the last committee was.
Okay.
That's what I mean, because we didn't talk about anything...
But there should be some substance.
We didn't talk about anything substance.
What was the purpose of ACES? Like, what?
I don't know, I mean, it started, I think it had good intentions, it was Ms. Bolden, and it was Mr. Sinfield, right, initially?
Well, I think, can I get a little history? Because we just said we don't want it to be like that, and I don't have any idea what that was, okay.
It was, it was an effort there, you know, it's the, it's the, one of the two circles that come together, there are places where we completely intersect with one another and need each other, and whether it's celebrating our kids, or whether it's transportation, or whether it's neighborhood development, I mean, whatever it would be, where we see an intersection, then that's what the topic should be. So, what happened was that the council submitted topics that they would like to see in a year's agenda, and, and it ended up being just that one committee, and then we submitted topics that we felt would, would, you know, benefit from mutual effort, and then from that, there was a year-long agenda that was drawn up, and there were public meetings, all these meetings have to be public, they can't be private. And so, that's what we did, unfortunate name, but it was, it was an effort to see where we intersect and then show the people and the voters and the community that we are working together instead of at odds with one another. And it worked for a while, but only a while.
Yeah, and what we did was alternate the quarterly meetings, and it, they were co-facilitated. Now, that in itself presented some problems.
Okay.
Because it then became pretty one-sided, and I, I just think the overall intent and purpose of it really kind of lost some momentum, as, you know, the farther, the older it got. But, but it can work, I just think we have to establish some different parameters around.
Do you feel, Dr. Moffett, like that gives you the kind of clarity you need, and Mr. Craig, do you have any other outstanding questions?
I don't have any other questions, I think what we can talk with council about is, you know, one, they're also made a lot of changes on council and how they're operating as well, and so, just ensuring that we are able to do something that'll be effective for the students of CPS... students of CPS first and foremost, and that we can do something that's collaborative with them is, is a great idea. And so, I'm excited to work with Dr. Moffett on that.
Thank you all very much. We're moving then. This is also for Dr. Moffett, I think, an update or reminder about Ms. Wright's first day on May 2nd. I had a note that that was added.
So I think that we just wanted to formally tell the community that our incoming superintendent was, is coming on effective May 2nd. And until that time, we have interim superintendent, Tiana Amat. So there's no confusion with people on when the superintendent is coming and starting. People don't have to send confusing information. It is Ms. Amat until May 1st and then May 2nd. Ms. Wright?
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. I think, I have some things I'd like to bring up around House Bill 616, which I put on there. The, folks have seen this, I would imagine, either in the press or from our Government Affairs Group or on social media, but there is a bill proposed in the Ohio House, Bill 616, that to me is, and we heard President Sellers say this in hearing of the public, just awful. And I think the way that it prohibits any discussion of sexual orientation or gender identity for students below a certain age, it actually makes it against Ohio law to use the 1619 project as any part of your curriculum. And I'd like to share, you know, my hope that as a school district, maybe not tonight, but at an upcoming meeting, we might say something, pass a resolution or something against that bill. That's my perspective. It's just my perspective. I'm not sure about the perspectives of the other board members up here, but I wanted to put it on the agenda tonight and then hear from people about, you know, my, my hope would be we could ask our communications team to put together a resolution that we could see ahead of time and then vote to approve at our next meeting. And I'd love to hear just if anybody likes that idea, thinks that's a terrible idea, and then go from there. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I, I fully support a resolution for that. I also think these are the, you know, we hear about, this stuff is coming down the pike so fast. And I think it's important for our liaisons to really keep us abreast, especially when we asked about it, like, when are they going to be presented in the general assembly? Because it may even be worth our while to show our faces and to encourage students, to encourage CFT and other, our unions to really come, go to the general assembly to do public speaking around that. So, you know, that's, that's where I am with it.
So yes, Anne, I hear. Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Maraski?
I adamantly support drafting a resolution and voting on it as this body. That makes it very, very clear that we do not support anything in this bill. You know, unfortunately, what I was saying down here to my colleagues that sit near me is unfortunately, these people in Columbus don't care about our testimony, they don't care about our kids. Many of them actually don't like our kids because of how our kids look and because of what their parents do for a living, whatever that may be. And unfortunately, that's just the way it is. And I think any way we can fight this hateful kind of legislation is important. I do think it's of note to call out that this recent "Don't Say Gay," as they're calling it in the media, piece that was thrown into this bill, was largely an attempt to revive a bill that was dead. I think it's worth noting in public session that the, one of the cosponsors of this original bill, 616, the divisive concepts bill, had kind of, you know, shot herself in the foot when she said you needed to teach both sides of the Holocaust. And the Republican Speaker of the House told her to take a seat and the bill kind of died. And this most recent "Don't Say Gay" bit is an attempt to revive it. You know, my hope is that this thing dies, but I think it's important that, that we, being charged with overseeing kids' education, urban school district especially, take a stand. So I applaud the president for putting it on the agenda. I'll support in any way I can.
Can I?
Thanks, Mr. Maraski. Can we just hear from folks who haven't gone yet and then we'll come as a clarifying question?
Can I, just a, a follow-up comment, one, follow-up comment on that. That there are many other bills similar to this coming down the pike. And, and so where this one might die, there are many others that follow that. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
I think there should be a resolution from locally elected school board, us, in opposition to this and those sorts of things that are generated by it. I also don't want us to take the bait of the political people that are trying to make us discuss this instead of all the other things that we need to be discussing. Because that's what they're doing. They're, they're, that's what they're doing. And, but we must take a stand for, for our kids and our families and as, as people that are duly elected locally. But I, I, I hope we don't necessarily find a way to fully engage in the dialogue with these people. But yes, we must take a stand.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think we, a board resolution is a great way of also indicating that we support all of our students in this district. And I think that's the biggest message that we can send when any of these types of bills come forward is that we're not here for any one or two students, but we're here for every student in our district. Make sure every student in our district has an opportunity to have an inclusive education that respects and appreciates them and their history. And I don't think these type of bills do that, but I think more importantly, our role as a board is to support and, and bring a district that will include every student that's in our district. And so, I think a board resolution would be a great way to demonstrate that.
Thank you. Any last comments? We, I think we should, we're proud as a board and as a district of both our equity policy and the anti-racism policy. And it feels like an opportunity to, to be public to what our values are in, in hopes of a better future. So thank you, I appreciate that. I think we're going to move then towards the end of our agenda this evening. We are finished with board matters, moving into the superintendent of schools. Interim Superintendent Amat, is there a report you'd like to share this evening?
Absolutely. Rob, can you bring up the report? I will start off by congratulating our Hawkins Award finalist. Western, Southern Hawkins Award honors one educator of the year who has elevated educational process in our public schools. And on May 5th, the winner will be announced and will receive $10,000. And I do want to take the time to say their name individually. I think it's important. Clayton Adams, Aiken High School, Michael Brown, South Avondale, Allison Burns, Woodward, Laura Coyne, Academy of Rural Languages, John Crawford, Reese Price, Shirley Eastley, Chase School, Jody Hammond, Midway, Eric Higgins is our principal, Hawk Montessori, Katie Hansberger, Gamble Elementary, Candace Jones, Woodward, Belicia, Kelly Hughes High School, Mark Messely, High Park School, Lindsay Nyberting, Westwood, Jennifer Nyman, Roberts, Lori Owens, CPS, William Shaw, Walnut Hills, Stacy Shockley, Matthews, NAM, and Caitlin Taylor Lighthouse. Let's give them a big round of applause. Onto our Citywide Student Art Show. Big shout out to Dr. Rudnick and his vision and working with all of our art teachers across the district. Our art featured more than 400 pieces in grades K through 12, from painting, sculptures, photography and more. And it's open to the public Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, now through May 2nd. I also want to acknowledge ABC Activities Beyond the Classroom for their help and support in sponsoring this event. Read Across CPS. This is an effort to continue encouraging our students and family to love literacy and meet our Every First Grade Greater Reads goal. So we have been hosting author visits and literacy nights across the district and students will receive a free book and talk about reading. Read Across Madisonville. This is our sixth annual Read Across Madisonville event, which this year celebrates the rich history of HBCUs. The event will take place April 20. We have published authors in third and fourth grade at John P. Parker, and this is their book, Our Voices and Imagination in Ink, and it's a collection of stories from our students. So not only they're readers, they're great writers, published authors. Exciting news, CTE opportunities are coming. We were awarded $100,000 from ODE in a grant to increase graduation rates specifically for our CTE students. Big shout out to Mike Turner and his team for writing the grant and, and having a great vision to support the graduation of our students. Just this past weekend, Evanston students won the UC Robotics Contest. And it was led by Ms. Deidra Simpson. So we're really proud of our students in that effort. And it was several districts and across the city, and our kids came home with the win. We also want to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Tammy Gilmore and Ms. Mildred Kennedy. They put on a fantastic career fair this past week at FC Cincinnati, and their students participated and it was a huge success. So again, partnerships with our resource coordinators. And then we have two more things. Vaccination clinics are coming up. So we have one coming Thursday at Hughes High School and then Rockdale Academy and South Avondale. And then lastly, just some reminder of important dates. The Citywide Art Show is here up until May 2nd. Midterm Week is April 18th. Earth Day is April 22nd. And Roberts will have a community cookout April 30th. That concludes my report and I submit my written report for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Interim Superintendent Amat, do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's report this evening?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion from Mr. Maraski, second from Ms. Jones. Any discussion? Mr. Guston?
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Wonderful. So we have the superintendent's report passed. On the treasurer's report, we need a motion to introduce the treasurer's report.
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
So for discussion, I think we have two items I know of, we may have more. I think we should chat about governance for a little bit because people had some questions and we did that priorities update at the beginning. I, I feel very excited about the recommendation that came from Mike and from Brandon, and I intend to continue supporting their recommendation for where we go next. And that is, you know, tough for me because I do also think extraordinarily highly of Alma Group and would be happy to provide a positive reference for anybody who would like one. But if anybody has questions, Ms. Jones, Ms. Bolton, I wanted to return to that topic from earlier. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I, I'm fully supportive of Council Great City Schools, that contract. I do feel very strongly that we could have a, if we could have a conversation about how, if there was a good fit in terms of the strategic planning process as Ms. Bolton has been describing it, and any opportunities that might be available to us for that. Not today, but maybe at a different meeting.
And this is to talk about not tonight, but at a different meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's absolutely fine. I just wanted to make sure before we ask people to vote on the, on the piece on the council that people got their questions answered. Ms. Bolton?
Well, as you all will recall, I gave it a green and was the only person, including the people that recommended this, didn't even give it a green. Pitiful. But, but it, it, then we're, we're wrong to do any of this because it's not all going to ever be done until it's done. So I mean, that, so I was thinking as to where we are, this is as done as anything else on this list. But my, my thought very strongly is that I do not want to engage in another RFP for a firm to come and lead us and facilitate our strategic planning. And we will need another firm to do that. There will have to be somebody that facilitates it. And indeed, within this RFP, letter K says this RFP may be awarded to a single vendor or multiple vendors on order to meet the service requirements of the RFP. So it would seem to me that we had three vendors that we kind of said okay to and then got deeper into it. And, and these folks properly recommended, for good reason, Great City Schools, and I'm supportive of that. But it would seem to me that what we need to do, and I think this would help move the governance piece along as well as would allow us to get a, a good start on a strategic plan, is to look at the various parts of this RFP that would lend themselves to strategic planning. And there are parts in this, talking about reaching out to the community, developing priorities and what have you, various assessments, performance related to identified competencies, assist in establishing skills, promarchally, external resources. It would seem to me that we could say the governance piece could be led, and I'm ready to vote yes on that, but we could subdivide part of this, since you guys didn't even say about the money. You were saying that one of the retractions of this was that it was up to $100,000 or what have you, and this could be part of it. And they even were talking about negotiating something less or whatever. So it seems to me the consensus, consensus builder, the consensus would be you have some group that's already got grit with the community, somebody that's also done more extensive involvement with the community than I can remember in 15 years. It is also a minority-owned business that we've now turned, you know, said no to. And I think, I, I think we should vote to have the, and the governance and the strategic plan should not be the same. I think those are two very different issues and approaches. So.
I think so.
My recommendation would be that, yeah, we'll vote for the governance piece and that we would then ask the Alma people to look at this RFP again and, and look at those things that could be part of our strategic plan since we want to start it, I mean, literally in, in, in less than a couple of months.
Yeah. And I think this is good for a next discussion about how we want to think about strategic planning. I don't think we're having that decision tonight or that discussion tonight, but I do think these are important things that we can revisit in that context. So I, I, any other last thoughts on the governance RFP before we keep moving?
I just wanted to make sure we're clear that what we're voting on today is just because what Great City offered is in the initial 20,000 boards, the session they would do on board governance, meet and greet type deal, the rest of it is still stuff we would have to finalize and decide upon. But I do think, to your point, Eve, and to your point, Carolyn, that we could do the strategic plan stuff as something separate altogether. Out of there, I was, I don't know that it was ever something, at least my understanding or intention on having it be part of our board development part, but really focus them on a narrow set of things that we can have them work on. And then the other stuff can be left to, the strategic planning and the other aspects of it could be left to something, to someone else.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any, any last comments on governance? Dr. Moffett?
So I, first of all, I think that we should definitely vote on the government, governance piece. But I feel as if you are looking specifically to have Alma do something rather than to have the best person or group do something. And, and, and that concerns me. I'm just, I'm just saying this publicly. We, we're voting on Council Great City Schools and then we can maybe solicit and have a request for proposals to solicit other people, but to say that it has to be a specific group for whatever the reasons that you're listing, concerns me that we're not necessarily opening that, that up, that net up to the best, but we're trying to go with what we know. And I don't know if that is necessarily the best. So I say we vote on this and then talk about strategic planning later. That's not what this was about. But I do want to make it known that, you know, I'm not, I'm not agreeing to table this specifically for Alma. I'm agreeing to get this started with Council Great City Schools and then we can come back and maybe solicit other proposals, include. and maybe solicit other proposals, include Alma. But that's not, that's, I just wanted to be very clear, I'm not saying that I'm going to table this for Alma.
Yeah, I think no, no decision is being made or asked to be made tonight as it relates to strategic planning.
Sounds good.
And I think it's an important, I appreciate you saying that, it's an important, I'm going to make clear for everybody. So second
I have to respond to that because you just said I'm trying to find work for Alma. I I'm not an agent of Alma. I just know that we've lived through more, almost a year of working with Alma, who has already done so much of the work that we want to get done and will be working from. So I'm happy to vote for, as I said, I voted green for Great City Schools. But I'll tell you, I I hope that we take up this question of the strategic plan the the next meeting, because in order to get a good start on it, you're going to have to, either you're issuing a new RFP or we are finding as we work through this RFP, as Mr. Craig has said, part of that can be the Alma Group. But yes.
So we'll, I think, important conversations to continue having. There's a second piece to the treasurer's report I want to make sure I also share, which is that board members have requested to clarify. So for Mike, board members are requesting the treasurer to expand on the narrative in item seven, Roman numeral seven. This relates to our separation agreement mutually agreed between the board and interim superintendent Amat. The board is very grateful to the interim superintendent for her leadership over the last year and we wish her every success in future endeavors. In the interest of being fully transparent, we're asking the treasurer to include the actual dollar amount of the payment to Ms. Amat, including salary and accrued leave. But Mr. Guston, can you share with the treasurer that the board would like that to be included in the amount, in the final version that gets posted?
Yes, we can do that.
Great, thank you very much. Do there any other discussion points or questions about the treasurer's report? We need a motion. We have a motion, we have a second already. So can you, Mr. Guston, please call the vote?
Sure. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, thank you. We are now on inquiries and updates. Do board members have any inquiries or updates? I have one. I'll be very quick. I I see every once in a while on New York Times, just updates on the next COVID wave. This was something called BA2 that was announced or that was covered just over the weekend with some case increases on the East Coast. I have just some memories of Omicron and I'm wanting to check to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to be ahead of whatever the next wave is. I don't know how concerned or unconcerned we should be about what was in the article on this BA2 variant. And I was just hoping we could hear from the administration, we shouldn't be worried at all and here's why, or here's what we're doing to make sure we're in front of it, or we need more time to figure it out, but just to get some update for us in the public on that.
Good evening. So thank you for your question. In conversations with medical professionals at the Cincinnati Health Department and Cincinnati Children's this afternoon, they indicated that we are not seeing community increases at this time in our area. As you may remember, there are three factors that we're looking at to closely monitor this in our community, one of those being occupancy, hospitalization, and the community cases. And CPS, in addition to monitoring those community factors, we are really still paying very close attention to the data, continuing with our daily meetings each and every day at 4 o'clock, and then the weekly meetings with the broader sector of all of the leadership from those two organizations I mentioned, paying close attention to student attendance, staff attendance, and positive cases. The other piece that our medical friends really highlighted are in New York City and Philadelphia where they are seeing increased cases right now, the hospitalization rates are not increasing as of yet, knock on wood. So the cases they are seeing primarily are in younger-aged people who are recovering.
And thank you, Susan, so much for this. And no big worry I have is that we would, for some reason, need to be virtual. Like, no, you're not, some, I know we're almost at the end of the school year, but that's that's not something that's concerning to you all.
Not at this point.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other inquiries? Mr. Maraski?
I just remembered, no, I have an update. It's not even an update, it's an announcement, so I'm going to say it. I want to say happy Black Maternal Health Week to all of our black moms in our district. It was a week that was celebrated and a lot of events took place at my old job, it's the only reason I know it's Black Maternal Health Week when I was working in infant mortality. So to two of our three board members, happy Black Maternal Health Week, Dr. Moffett, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Weinberg, who's not here. And again, thanks to all the moms in the district that help our district go around. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Do we have any assignments this evening? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. For the administration, I would like to know, let's see how I say this, I'd like to know how much we pay the city and for what on crossing guards. We know that it's their salary and wages. I'd like to know if we are paying their benefits or other items, what's the full compensation. And it'd be great to see a location of crossing guard assignments and the ones that are vacant. And then the other assignment, if I might, Mr. President, a clarification, because we had some discussion, I think, last time about the number of students in our Summer Scholars program that occurred last year and I guess whatever we know about this coming year and the number of staff and the the dollar amount, that would be great.
Any other assignments?
Along the summer, among the summer scholars, data, I, do we have, have we collected data from last year's summer scholars? Can we get just a report on that?
Yes, it was, we presented maybe last month. Okay. Yes.
The academic data?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Ms. Jones?
They presented some of that and we asked for some more specific data around the numbers. So we could just remind them, and I'll take responsibility for that, to remind them to get those numbers. They did give us an update, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Any last assignments before we close tonight? Ms. Jones?
Just real quick, just to ask our staff if they could take a few minutes to gather the information on the two members.
That's a great idea.
There's tons of it.
Enjoy. So having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.